It's got too big. Yeah, I think it just required a lower signal strength for a sound connection. Cut, that's what.
Is he here? Yeah. He's actually, he's actually definitely.
How you doing?
She's gonna be there.
She's gonna be there.
Yeah, so we're going to fly her back.
Okay.
Um, to. Clerk, testing one, two.
Okay. Okay.
Testing one, two, let's see. Testing one, two, tested, oh wait. Testing one, two, there we go.
There you go.
All right. Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Van Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. Estella Shabazz.
Present.
Here she is. Chairman Nick Palumbo. All right, Vice Chair Linda Wild O'Brien. Alderwoman Carolyn H. Bell.
Present.
Alderwoman Alicia Miller Blakely.
She'll be absent.
Okay. Alderwoman Bernetta Lanier.
Present.
Alderman Dietrich Leggett.
Sending a funeral on my behalf.
And Alderman Curtis Purte.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you do have a quorum.
Thank you. We call this workshop of the Savannah City Council to order. Uh, today is April the 10th, 2025, the time is 12:06 PM. We'll ask Alderman Curtis Purte of the 6th District to lead us in a word of prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if you would, please join me in prayer. Heavenly Fathers, we gather today before the Savannah City Council meeting, we humbly come before you with hearts full of gratitude and reverence. We acknowledge your presence, your wisdom, and guidance in all that we do here today. Grant us the strength to fulfill our responsibilities with integrity, respect, and fairness. Bless each council member here today with clarity of thought, open-mindedness, and a genuine desire to serve the community that we represent. May our discussions be filled with understanding, empathy, and constructive dialogue. Aimed at promoting well-being and the progress of our community here in Savannah. Help us to seek solutions that uplift the lives of all of our residents and foster harmony among diverse perspectives. Lord bless us with discernment, compassion, and the courage to act in the best interest of Savannah and all of its people. We pray all this in the name of God the Creator, Christ the Redeemer, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you all very much. Uh, today, we really have a single issue. Uh, we have anything on exec? Okay, Mr. Manager, anything on exec? Mr. Clerk, anything on exec? Okay, uh, so a singular item, and this is something that, uh, you've been briefed about, and so now it's time to, to formally talk about it. Um, the city manager will present a discussion, a proposal for us to withdraw from the Recorder's Court of Chatham County. Uh, and to start, um, what could be known as the Savannah Municipal Court. Um, I've been looking at this model for years now, certainly talking about it, um, publicly for over two years now. And city staff, um, under the direction of the city manager and city attorney, have been meeting with our county partners, our Recorder's Court staff. Uh, also reviewing the landscape, reviewing best practices in Georgia, and we're ready to approach city council about moving forward in this process. Um, we did not create Recorder's Court, and so be clear, we can't abolish the Recorder's Court, and that's not what we're seeking to do. Uh, but we can choose where we direct our funds, uh, and we can choose where we direct our personnel. And I believe that a Savannah Municipal Court is the best model for us moving forward. Recorder's Courts in Georgia are largely remnants of older court systems, often rooted in colonial or reconstruction, uh, structures. Many were established before home rule, uh, which will be discussed in the presentation. Um, and home rule helped cities to modernize their governance structures. City Attorney and I were talking, and we believe the Recorder's Court grew out of what was known as the Mayor's Court in 1876 or so. Uh, and Recorder's Court was formally authorized in 1926 as the Georgia General Assembly, um, granted the city of Savannah countywide jurisdiction. And, uh, the system is, has worked reasonably well, but I think simply put, this form of court does not work for us anymore. Um, we're looking to better align our judicial system, particularly around public safety, code and housing enforcement, and restorative justice. Uh, and moving to a municipal, uh, court model will give us the tools, give us the authority, and the responsiveness to do just that. Uh, cities like Atlanta and Augusta operate successful municipal courts. Um, there are only three left in the state of Georgia, and every municipality in Chatham County, except for Vernonburg and Savannah, have a municipal court. Um, and so cities have moved from the antiquated practices of Recorder's Court, uh, to municipal courts. Um, and so for us, this creates opportunities to, uh, expand our scope, if, if funded and structured correctly, uh, to handle additional things. Um, and we can still do, uh, initial appearances on felony charges since this is a court of first impression. And so we could also strategically, uh, align our municipal court with other city departments, uh, like co-compliance, public safety, and community services to allow more holistic approach, uh, to community-based justice. Uh, like code compliance, public safety, and community services to allow a more holistic approach, uh, to community-based justice. And so while justice should not be about revenue either, we can, I believe we can operate a Savannah Municipal Court at less cost, higher efficiency, less personnel. Uh, and the fines and fees collected through a well-managed structured court can be reinvested, uh, into local, uh, safety and community-based programs. So, uh, as you can probably tell, this has been a, a lot of thought and, and research, and so I want to thank city manager. Thank the city attorney for, uh, leading at least the investigation on our behalf. And I believe city manager, you'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, great to be here today. Um, uh, a look at the Recorder's Court and the structure of Recorder's Court was an item that, um, city council placed on their vision wall, um, a year and a half ago. And a year and a half ago, uh, we started to begin looking at, uh, that structure, structures across the state that were similar. Um, and structures across the str- state and here in Chatham County, which looked a little different. Um, Recorder's Court, um, is a, uh, well-run court. Um, and we have, uh, tremendous, uh, staff, um, who work hard every day, um, on the diligent and orderly administration of the court. Um, we have wonderfully respected, uh, elected judges, um, who have full judicial control, um, over those courts. Um, and, uh, do the, um, do the electrics bidding as it, as it relates to these administrative law, uh, matters. But today, we have prepared a presentation and a discussion about the differences between Recorder's Courts, um, and municipal courts. Uh, to help, uh, better shape this discussion and understanding about what our court system looks like here and what it looks like other places. And, uh, what opportunity, pros and cons exist for making changes or staying the same. And to help us, uh, in that discussion, I want to call up our interim Chief of Information and Public Affairs, Joe Sheerhouse. Um, and he will be, um, also joined along with me with our Court Administrator and Senior Director of Recorder's Court, um, is Donna Willingham. So I'll turn it over to Joe, and we'll run through some information, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager and Mayor and Council, Joe Sheerhouse, Acting Chief of Information and Public Affairs. Uh, just wanted to highlight some of the goals of today's presentation, which will be to review some of the functions of Recorder's Court and municipal courts for both city council and the public. To highlight a few differences between the two and discuss a few pros and cons of those different courts' functions. And then to review some of the common concerns that we've heard around Recorder's Courts and municipal courts. Before we jump into the presentation, I did want to acknowledge the Court Administrator, Donna Willingham, who's here, and the Deputy Clerk Katrina Jackson, who both do a tremendous job administering the court. They successfully prioritize making sure that our court is accessible and provides our citizens a good experience from when they enter the court to when they leave the court. Second, they work to make sure that our judges have the resources and technology that they need to adjudicate cases. And lastly, they focus to making sure that the court is run efficiently and respectful of all taxpayer dollars. So before we get into Recorder's Court and municipal courts, uh, first wanted to just provide a brief overview of the ecosystem of our Chatham County court system. And how these two courts fit into the other courts within our system. You'll see this, uh, this flow chart here, which shows the different courses, courts, which each have particular jurisdictions which they handle. And cases that fit best within them for them to adjudicate those cases. Each has a clear and defined role. Recorder's Court and municipal courts are largely a funnel for all preliminary hearings for cases and small local ordinance violations, traffic cases, and code cases. Those cases will then be either adjudicated at these two courts, or the more complex issues will be elevated to a court that can handle them appropriately. As the Mayor mentioned in his opening comments, Recorder's Courts are not as common as they once were. There's only three that exist within the state of Georgia to date, one in Gwinnett County, Muskogee County, and here in Chatham County. Like I mentioned before, Recorder's Court's jurisdiction is within the jurisdictional boundaries of which they are located. Here in Chatham County, our Recorder's Court has jurisdiction in the city of Savannah's city limits and the unincorporated Chatham County. As you'll see here at this slide, our Recorder's Court handles around 33,000 cases a year, these are 2024 numbers. And of those cases, roughly 22,000 are within the city of Savannah's jurisdictional limits, and 11,000 are within Chatham County. The court is funded through an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Savannah and Chatham County. And that intergovernmental agreement has a cost-share mechanism that divides up the cost for certain cases, uh, and what they cost to adjudicate for the court. And then is allocated out at the end of the year. For 2024, the city of Savannah paid $3.2 million for the administration of Recorder's Court, and the county paid 1.2 for a total of 4.5 million. I also want to point out, you'll see in this chart listed here on the slide, that the large number of cases that Recorder's Court hears are, uh, traffic cases, or the largest volume of which they, uh, adjudicate. Within Chatham County, we have six other municipal courts, Savannah and Vernon- Vernonburg being the only municipalities who do not currently have a municipal court. Municipal courts have very similar functions than Recorder's Court, they handle low-level violations like lo- local ordinance violations, traffic matters, code matters. The main distinction is the jurisdiction in which those cases can be heard. All of these municipal courts will hear those offenses if they are, take place within their jurisdiction. And again, our Recorder's Court will hear cases that take place within the city of Savannah or unincorporated Chatham County. A quick comparison between the two, which highlights a lot that I've already reviewed this morning with y'all, is that both courts are very similar. The main distinction being that the jurisdictions are what dictate who controls or who adjudicates which cases. You'll also see that within Recorder's Court, they have a system where the judges are elected. And municipal courts can have appointed or elected judges, are the two significant distinctions. Just some considerations to point out for the pros and cons of a potential transition between the two. Some pros could be in alignment with other municipal courts within Chatham County and across the state of Georgia. Another pro could be greater jurisdictional control over certain cases, whether they be code or traffic within the city of Savannah's jurisdiction. And the potential financial autonomy, or potential cost savings that could be a result of the move to a municipal court. The cons would be the transition costs and the coordination and staff time that would take to make sure that that transition was done in an efficient and appropriate manner. It also would be one less partnership that we have with our friends at Chatham County and, uh, a cooperative agreement that we have with them currently. And then there would be the process changes that we would have to administer, not only with the agencies that use the court. But also with the other courts that would now have to handle the case volume that Recorder's Court would be ceding to those courts. Just a highlight to city council on the work that has been done to date. City staff has notified our county partners of our intent to do a preliminary review and explore the potential of any transition, pending city council's feedback on the item. We've also done an extensive review of the other two Recorder's Courts within the state of Georgia to understand their operations and challenges. Additionally, we've contacted our six municipal courts within Chatham County to understand their transitions and operations and the history of those municipal courts. And we've compiled a preliminary assessment of what it would look like to stand up a Savannah Municipal Court. A few common concerns we've heard through the years of our Recorder's Court here in Chatham County was the overuse of pro tem judges compared to how many, how many cases were heard by elected judges versus pro tem judges. The distinction between court administration challenges, the authority of the judges versus the court administrator, and any gray areas between those two. The overburdened of dockets, the rate of court, of, uh, continuance of cases, cases being continued at rates that cause the efficiency of the court to go down. And then the creation of docket schedules and the balancing between that, the court administrator, and the judges to make sure those dockets are done in a way that is equitable to all the stakeholders that are involved. And with that, I'd pass it back to the city manager or open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Joe, I think to, and to, you know, be specific about some of the, you know, concerns and some of the reasons why we were looking into this, or, yeah, we felt that council was asking us to look into this and some of the concerns that we hear from residences. Um, uh, the speed or pace at which code compliance cases make their way, um, through the court as well. Um, and then the, you know, uh, small but, um, you know, significant challenge that we may have when, um, the, the cost of the court. Is more burdened on the taxpayer than the fine payer. Um, and those are judicial decisions and not in the realm of city management at all. Um, but the administration of the court, um, and the orderly administration and funding of the court, um, in the past has largely been based on the fines and fees collected, um, in the court. And I believe last year was the first year that fines and fees collected, Joe, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, did not cover the cost of the court. Um, and so that's subsidized by general fund, um, taxpayers, um, which is, uh, court is a necessary function of government, and we will fund it and keep it running. Uh, but those are, those are concerns nonetheless, um, and involve judicial decisions, not city management or court administration decisions.
Thank you, I do want to take a moment to, uh, out of, Mr. Attorney, you have anything you want to add? Uh, the presence of, uh, Judge Hoffman and Judge Harmon from Recorder's Court, as well as the court administration staff, uh, Alderman Purtee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is, this is a tough conversation to have, and for someone that's been involved with the workings of the Recorder's Court for the past 20 years. Uh, I am very familiar on the workings of Recorder's Court and very familiar on their jurisdiction and their role. And what concerns me, and it is two things that concern me, one, we talk about a cost savings. And I understand that we are fiduciary agents for the government, but when you look at how we run the court, we, I understand that Atlanta has, has Recorder's Court, we have a Recorder's Court, and so does Muskogee County.
No, not Atlanta.
Gwinnett County, excuse me, Gwinnett County. I understand that, okay, we, we are, um, we are Savannah, we are Savannah-Chatham County. And I've, I've got a few things to say about that, when, instead of trying to remove the city from Recorder's Court. Um, instead of discontinuing combined services, like we've been doing, a practice we've been doing in this city for the past 10 years, we should be combining and should be trying to figure out solutions to make this work. The problem that I have, if you look at the volume of what Recorder's Court has done over the past year or so, 30,000 citations, 25,000 misdemeanors, or 2,500 felony cases, 3,000 search and arrest warrants, 1,600 DUI cases. And some of those things, once we move, if that's the, if that's the decision of the governing body, of this governing body, if we decide to move to our own municipal court, we're not going to have some of those, uh, we're not going to be able to hear some of those cases that they can in Recorder's Court now. You talk about domestic violence, I'll look at it from a public safety perspective. How many of our shooting cases where we've had shootings or a gun discharge has been a domestic violence situation, or a family violence situation? A lot, a lot here in Savannah. And we take away our opportunity to have that heard in Recorder's Court. Automatically, it goes right up to state court. So. There's other things that come into play, liability issues. We already know that once police has somebody in their custody, they are our responsibility, they are our liability, okay? Now, if you look at, we decide to, uh, start our own city court, we are responsible for the transport and for the security of those inmates that come over. Right now, the sheriff's office provides that, and at a zero cost, zero cost to the city, zero. Where other places, they're charging. Talk to the city of, of, of Garden City, talk to the city of Port Wentworth and Poole, those folks are paying something we are not. So that's where the cost savings comes into play, okay? So not only do we have the liability issues, but now we got the staffing issues. We are not and have not been fully staffed at the police department, no fault of our wonderful folks and leadership over there, it is just the way it's been the past, I don't know how many years. We have not been, nor are we fully staffed at the police department. And I am not willing to put public safety at risk because we have to pull officers off the street to transport, to play bailiff at a courthouse, and to provide security there. That is not common sense, and it's not fiduciary, uh, responsibility, it's not good fiduciary responsibility of good government. So, I'm not done, Mr. Mayor.
It's fine.
I've got a few more things, I've, I've been working on this for a while.
I'd like to speak next.
So, what I'm worried about the most. Is the fact that, yes, it may feel like an antiquated system, but it was, Recorder's Court was. It was created on a constitutional amendment, okay? Not only was it created on a constitutional amendment, but it gives the folks in this community a right to vote for their judge over this court. And by taking that right away, that right would now rely on this governing body up here, which, yes, we are the voice of the people. But there has to be a separation of power between the legislative branch and the judicial branch, okay? Some of that stuff has been basically taught in high school, alright, so we have to have that separation of power. We can't be the city of Savannah and hold all the power for what we do here in the city, there has to be a checks and balances system. So, I implore you, although this is a very important and tough conversation to have, that is my stance on it, I will not, I will not vote for removing ourselves from Recorder's Court. I think there has to be some conversations that need to take place, and I think that there needs to be some cooperation among the parties involved. As I said before, what we're seeing across the state of Georgia is a combination of services, a merging of services, not demerging. We made that mistake years ago when we demerged the police departments, big mistake. Hopefully, we can find some more areas to merge in the future, but this is one of them that needs to stay there, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Sheerhouse, go back to, uh, item number six, there was one, I believe that, uh, in some cases in Recorder's Courts, or in municipal courts, judges are appointed or elected depending on the governing body. Alderwoman, uh, you go, take it back to, uh, slide six, Alderwoman Blakely, and then it was Alderwoman Wild O'Brien.
Thank you so much. Alderman Purtee. You said it, and I appreciate it, and I applaud you for saying it. I have questions for you, Mr. Sheerhouse, um, you said you all, uh, checked the other municipalities that have municipal courts in it. I didn't hear whether or not you said there were pros and cons, you didn't list those, I would like to know what are the pros and cons of, uh, the other municipal courts? And, um. Reviewed the operations of Chatham Counties, that's the six, I want to see what the pros and cons were for those. And I have some questions, because, um, as I stated before when we had the conversation, I'm not. Even wanting to consider taking the power away from the people to have the opportunity to vote for who they want. As the judge of the municipal court, I mean, the Recorder's Court, okay? Now. This was done by. Let me make sure, I got, I wrote these questions that, down. When was Recorder's Court established?
Eighteen twenty-five, nineteen twenty-five, something.
Nineteen twenty-five?
I believe so.
Long time ago.
Were the citizens allowed to vote on the amendment to create this court?
General, uh, Georgia General Assembly.
Correct, okay? Um, and the county is in partnership with this, has the county said that they want to dissolve this court?
Uh, no ma'am, we haven't heard that from the county, um, explicitly, but we've talked to them about the.
So the city of Savannah is just taking this on, on themselves to say, we no longer want to do the.
Uh, no ma'am, um, we're, we're gathering information based on council's visioning. No, ma'am, we're, we're gathering information based on council's visioning session and having that discussion today. So we're talking with the county about the discussion that we're preparing for city council and, you know, there's really, you know, if you're thinking about what is the, what is the administration of the Recorder's Court versus the administration of a municipal court, which is really kind of the two options that you have as a municipality in terms of this kind of administrative law adjudication, those are kind of the, the, the two court systems that, that you've got an option for. So we wanted to be able to provide a discussion today, which talked about what is Recorder's Court and how does that happen here in the city of Savannah? What are the common issues that we hear about Recorder's Court, which may be the same issues that you would hear about a municipal court as well? What is the functions of that administration and what are the pros and cons of those administration? And what are some of the challenges? Not that inherently the challenge of any Recorder's Court is more challenging than that of a municipal court, they're just different and they have different structures and, and they, and especially in Chatham County, municipal court looks a lot different than a Recorder's Court. So what we wanted to be able to do to provide to council today was some background information and discussion around what's our Recorder's Court? Where do Recorder's Court exist in Georgia, to other places? What do municipal courts look like? And then to tee up a discussion about the conversations and the concerns that, that I often hear from you all and from residents regarding things moving through Recorder's Court. And I think that your question about what are those pros and cons of municipal court is a good one. And I think that you'll likely, you know, probably hear a little bit of those same pros and cons when you look at a municipal court as well.
Mr. City Manager, you said that council wanted us to look into this. I'm not a part of, I guess, of that discussion because I didn't want us to look into this. And have you spoken to the district attorney? And you said the county doesn't know, so obviously, have anybody spoken to the district attorney and the sheriff in reference to all of this?
One moment, you didn't say the county didn't know.
We've, we're partners--
I just asked, have we even talked to--
Yeah, and we have.
And the county is saying that they want to get rid of Recorder's Court. They're not saying that.
They have not said that, to my knowledge, but they are aware that we're having these conversations with, with city council. And, and we've been completely transparent with them, and we've been working with them on information as well. So they, they're aware that we're having this conversation.
Hold on, Mr. City Manager. It seems to me that we would be losing money as opposed to gaining money if we did this. We would be taking away the rights of the citizens to vote for who they want as judges on Recorder's Court. This, to me, seems like it's something personal going on, instead of us being good fiduciaries of, and responsibilities of this Recorder's Court. So I, I totally, I will be one to vote against us doing anything with this Recorder's Court because from my understanding and from what I've seen, going to that court is operating like it's supposed to. Based on the numbers that I just heard, with them doing all, the, the level and amount of work that they're doing, I actually applaud you all, okay? So bring it before us if you want to. I'm going to be one to vote to keep it like it is. Thank you.
Fine, thank you. Mr. Sharehouse, let's go back to the financials, and I think there's some historical data regarding the court being able to be self-sufficient, that needs to be addressed as well.
Yeah, yes, sir, Mayor. The, the question I think you're referencing is our fine collection. So over the past four years, with the exception of last year, typically, our fines cover our expenses for Recorder's Court. However, last year, the general fund had to subsidize the city's cost for Recorder's Court in the amount of $1.1 million.
And historically, the, the court should take care of itself, basically, should be itself, self-sufficient, correct?
On average, historically, it has.
Right. And so now, when you go into the general fund, which is the, the tax base to be able to pay for a function that ideally should be taken care of by those that are utilizing the court.
Correct.
Thank you.
Is this the only time that, that we've, we've been deficit in, as far as the fines are?
I'd have to look at the history. We looked at a five-year history, but we could certainly look further.
So in the five-year history, this is the only year, right?
Yes, sir.
This is the only year.
In the last five years.
Do we, do we pay a per diem to the county?
No.
Per inmate?
No.
We do not. We do not pay a per diem, per, per inmate to the county. Now, when we release from the county court, or release from Chatham County Recorder's Court, we will pay a per diem, per inmate. So do we know the cost savings analysis there?
I think some of that was also addressed in the last loss, but city manager could talk a little bit more about that.
We used to, we, the city of Savannah used to pay a per diem to the, to Chatham County per night. In the 2010 SPOLOST, in that agreement, that first showed the provision that the, the lost, I'm sorry, not SPOLOST, local option sales tax, that the, the percentages gained by the county in the 2010 local option sales tax allocation negotiation included the cost of per diem for the city of Savannah, and that the city of Savannah would no longer pay a per diem for those services. That same provision was re-upped in the 2020 local option sales tax negotiation and allocation, which states specifically that, that the county's share of local option sales tax covers the city of Savannah's--
Until when?
Ten years.
It's a 10-year agreement.
And so you're 10 years until 2030?
Yes.
I'm, I'm--
All right, thank you. Alder Woman, Wilder-Brian.
Mr. Mayor, and I just want to be really clear about this. I have like 18 years of law enforcement, and 15 of them were spent at the Chatham County Sheriff Department as a booking sergeant. And the problems that we have here, a lot of the cases that we have in Recorder's Court, traffic, petty crimes, misdemeanor, they actually, those people who come back in the confines of the criminal justice system are one of the worst, some of the worst people, really. And so we're bottlenecking there. And I tell you, there are several reasons why we are, because of the court administrator's office, right? And Ms. Willing, she is doing a great job, but it is, the problem is what it is. We've got a lot of stuff going on, we've got judges canceling cases, whether it's defendants or the prosecutors, and then we got citizens in the middle. Whatever you do, be mindful that you have citizens who have been sitting there for crimes that they, in Recorder's Court, that possibly the state law says that they can spend two years up in the county jail. And so we have all of these defendants who go to court, and they sit there and wait, their lives are on hold because of cancellations and all of that. And so what do we do about that? We have all these judges, and I didn't see, how many judges do we have in Recorder's Court? I should know, I don't, but I'm really now, because 23% you're saying is being, these cases are being heard by, was it--
Pro temp judges.
Pro temp judges?
There are three elected Recorder's Court judges, and there is a slate of pro temp judges that cover dockets whenever those three judges can't hear those dockets.
And that is my point, all right? So we continue to work in silos, right? We've got all of these cases, we had all of these cases where defendants, people that we all serve, can't get home for whatever reason it is. And so do what we need to do. I just want to know, I just want you to know that most of the fights that happen coming back from court are from inmates who can't get out of jail, who can't get out, get a bond, and they come back and they fight and they cause a disturbance. And so we got to look at everything from all sides of it. And I don't believe that we put the human part in it, these people who want to go home, who have children and families for misdemeanor charges for whatever reason. And the reason starts with the three judges and the pro temp judges. Y'all need to get yourselves together, because they're calling us saying that they can't get to court, it's been canceled, they're going to lose jobs, and how do we fix that? That's my concern right now. And so if the state legislature can fix it, if us doing something about it, because that's, that's a concern. We got people, fathers who want to be fathers, we got people who are getting disposessory notes and they can't get through, I know that's magistrate court, and I know that those court, those cases are passed up to whatever superior and state court, but it starts in the Recorder's Court. Do we need more judges that sit on that bench who don't cancel? Because they do, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but we know. And so when y'all cancel, y'all canceling out what's going on in people's personal lives. And Superior Court ain't got nothing to do with this. Thank you very much.
Let, let me add, and this, this was one of the priorities on the visioning session that council had, which is why city staff is investigating it. Some of the issues that you all raised that deal with issues of co-violations that you get complaints about, I, I spoke this week with the president of the Liberty City Community Association, that says they've had cases that have been open for five years. And so what ends up happening is, for whatever reason, when these things are not handled, if they raised to the judicial level and they're not handled, for whatever reason, the community comes back to you, and then you come back to staff. And so it becomes a, an issue that just kind of is around and around and around, yet those neighbors, those individuals are dealing with these co-violation concerns that all of us have complained about at some point or another.
Thank you.
One of the things that is-- And I wanted to not disparage the, you really are hardworking, but when I worked there, when the court administrators used to come, and I don't know if you're still doing that way, but they had assignments to particular judges. And some of the judges went harder, and so they were telling me, it depends on whose judge that you're fighting with as a court administrator, as opposed to one judge who's slack. And just like you have slack leaders and slack officials, you have slack judges too. And that's part of our problem, that's part of our problem, you know? And so we got to fix who we elect, and that includes me and everybody else. If they're going to be a voice, if they're going to be a voice and they're going to sit in these seats and judge people know that they're going to be judged to, and that judgment comes when they're elected, you are harming people who want to go home to their families. And it's inexcusable for the same person, and I know this personally, to go to court and their court is passed for three or four times. That's not right. And so we need to fix that. Thank you so much.
Let, let me just add, and then we'll go Alder Man Palumbo, then Alder Woman, Miller Blakely, Alder Woman Bell after that. This is also a unique situation, because again, in a municipal court situation, our judges can be elected, but they will be elected by the city of Savannah only. In this case, which is kind of unique, Recorder's Court judges are elected countywide, even by people of other municipalities that they don't service. So people in Poole vote for municipal court judges that service the city of Savannah. So, I mean, if we talk about representation, you have people that are going to the polls that are voting for someone that has nothing to do with them, so to speak. So I just wanted to offer that context, that was something that came up in our discussions. Alderman Palumbo, Alder Woman, Miller Blakely, Alder Woman Bell.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll apologize to my colleagues in advance. Usually, I try to be as brief as possible, come well-read and studied, but this one's just a little bit different because the agenda says today, Recorder's Court discussion. And of course, I'm ready to discuss Recorder's Court. In my five years that I've been on the council, and all of us have served at least five years, we've actually never had a session on Recorder's Court. I think we've had a fam course on it, a familiarization course on it, but we've never done a workshop in depth as to the metrics, the study, the amount of revenue. So I was anticipating that, I understand that there are challenges, I've heard of some of the challenges, I expected that we were going to address some of the challenges. I didn't expect that we were going to be deciding today whether or not to move ahead with a--
We're not.
But, so I have lots of questions, and I think they're good questions that the public needs to answer, relevant to the presentation, and I thank the city staff for preparing this. So there were differences in the Recorder's Court and the municipal court. Two of the, and the biggest question is what cases do they address? If we could put that slide back up, because there's two, the differences are important. It says, one handles misdemeanors and the other handles some misdemeanors. Can you please identify, what's the differences in the different misdemeanors between the two? And then rule Nisi down at the bottom, if we could define that as well.
Mr. Attorney?
So, one, on the differences in misdemeanors. As Alderman Perty hit on it, one of the big considerations is the domestic violence and what responsibilities a municipal court judge would be given in the domestic violence arena. Now, hypothetically, if a municipal court is stood up, you can work with some of the state court judges and the superior court judges to assign them roles specific to those types of topics. But that would be something that would happen after it stands up, and there's no guarantee that they would agree to that. That might not be something that they want. They may want that work to be in their court or magistrate court. Magistrate court will continue to exist under this circumstance. Rule Nisai is just really, it's an assignment of a particular hearing by judges, and it's just not appropriate in a municipal court like it can be in a Recorder's Court.
Okay, thank you. Regarding staffing and implementation, so if we stand up municipal court, who, I'm assuming that it's us, but who staffs the court? Who's the bailiff? Who's the, who's the processor? Who, you know, is it all on us? Does the partnership continue? Help us--
Under a, under a traditional municipal court, the, the municipality would staff those functions. Recorder's Court right now is staffed by city of Savannah employees. We share in that cost, not quite equally, with Chatham County.
And the, but the municipal court, the cost sharing would go away, I'm assuming?
That's true, yes, it would.
Okay.
Not for bailiffs or transport.
All right, and here, this is not a trick question, I promise you, but, you know, I think even Savannah residents have a hard time identifying where the jurisdictional boundaries are, right? There are pieces that don't touch, and this is not a silly question, but do county residents appear for our cases in Recorder's Court today? Like, do residents from Poole and do, you know?
So it, it depends on the, the reason why they're there. Like, if a resident of Poole is driving through the city of Savannah and gets a speeding ticket, the resident of Poole can appear. Code enforcement, no sir. Like, if, if Poole has a code enforcement violation, they enforce that in their own municipal court. So it depends on what the violation is.
Somebody gets in a domestic dispute in wherever--
In Savannah.
Say, city of Savannah--
Correct.
Or the county.
It really, it really is dictated by which authority is issuing the citation. So if it's Savannah Police Department issuing the citation in the city of Savannah, it would be seen in municipal court, no matter where that resident is. Of course, code compliance deals with property that's located within the jurisdiction, et cetera.
Parking, stuff like that.
Regarding the, in identifying some of the problems, I think, I'm trying to get through in the presentation, rendering down, I'm hearing two, and if there's more, please let me know, that the main problems are pro temp caseload, which is over 20%, and then there's been mention of costs. If there are too many pro temp judges assigning the cases, have we considered adding more permanent judges to the Recorder's Court? And if that process, how does that work? Or why do we have the pro temp judges, if you can help me understand?
Adding another elected judge would be something that we would have to look at because they are county-wide elected seats, so that would probably have to be changed from the county charter level. The, but the pro temp judges are added as we need judges. So if an elected judge needs to take a day off, then a pro temp judge will come in and hear that docket, or two dockets, depending on the day.
Let me just also add, let me ask to your point, Alder Man Palumbo, also, the city council appoints pro temp judges. That is our function. And so if it's not appointed by the court, it's appointed pro temp in the place of, by city council. There was a, a legal term that, Mr. Attorney, I'm going to mess up, pro hag vichy, which is a temporary appointment for a particular purpose. It is not a pro temp situation. And that is outside of how it's supposed to run. This council is brought to us. We have not been brought-- We have not been brought pro temps in quite some time, but yet they're being appointed. That's an issue that has to be addressed as well. But just to answer your point, ideally, ideally, right, ideally, from the initial estimates, that we could actually operate the municipal court. Ultimately, with not all the staff that we have now and greater efficiency and flexibility than is operated now without some of the backlog. So I just wanted to add that to your question. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, no. And the other pillar is, I'm hearing about cost and cost and revenue. I mean, because inevitably, there will be significant cost to standing up a new municipal court. You have to, you know, we have to determine whether it's worth pursuing based on those, if that's, if, if that's what we're here to do. Are there any policy documents, are there any that have ever been passed that says that this needs to be revenue neutral? Is that something that we've decided? Is there anything that guides that?
No, I'm not aware of any, Alderman. And I think it really comes down to, one, a policy question, or two, a judicial matter, right? And so I think the, where judges whom are elected are accountable to the citizens that elect them, right? And so we have elected Recorder's Court judges who are issuing judicial judgments that they feel are in line with the voters and the communities that they serve, right? So if judges are issuing more community service, right, in place of fines or fees related to those citations, then of course, the court's gonna collect fewer fines and fees, and you're gonna see more community service as a result of that. And that's a judicial decision. And it might be the right judicial decision. But there is a, but there is, becomes a policy question involved in there as well. How, what's the nature of the court, especially a municipal court, which is more administrative law? You sped, you know, do you, are you gonna admit that you sped and pay the fine? And if you don't admit, well, then you'll go through the court system, right? But you're gonna pay this fine and move on, or you're gonna do community service and move on, right? So that's really a policy question and a judicial question, right? So the judges can be elected and be accountable to the electorate and pass on the judicial decisions that they make based on their idea of how they're serving their community, which is completely valid because they were elected into those seats. Or in the case of other municipal courts where either the legislative body appoints judges or the executive branch appoints judges, then the feeling is, is that those judges might make judicial decisions that are more in line with that specific municipality's priorities at the given moment. That's the working theory, or a working theory, and I think is at the basis of the policy decision around, do we like the judicial system that we're working under now? Or do we want to see a change? And the, from my view as well, if there are things that city council wants to see differently at a Recorder's Court versus a municipal court, you know, there may be other ways to get at what you, you know, want to do. Maybe a municipal court is the thing that you want to see because you believe fully that you'll be able to inject more of the values from the city of Savannah, the city council, and the residents that you serve. Or you feel like more reporting and oversight and more transparency is needed in the operation of the Recorder's Court as it is. So it's more of a, you're shining more light on the operation.
Well, thank you for the clarity. And I think my own decision tree is that we have to address the challenges in their time, in their place, and try to do them as fast and efficiently as possible. If that means reinventing the wheel, right, or developing something new, let's just make sure that we exhaust every other opportunity before we have to do that. That, you know, we can all agree the Recorder's Court needs to be better. I agree that the city of Savannah could be better. You know, that there's a lot of great stuff that we do, but we are always constantly needing to improve ourselves. I want to make sure that we exhaust every opportunity to improve it. Because I'm sure that everybody that's serving over there, they want it to be better as well. What tools do they need? Have we exhausted every opportunity? Have we talked to the legislature about maybe adding a couple of judges to the bench if our county's dramatically grown over time? When's the last time we had a permanent sitting judge added to the list? Who funds that? I don't know.
2004, I believe.
And when it comes to costs, fundamentally, I tell constituents all the time, we constantly preach that code compliance doesn't have a profit motive. They are not a revenue generator for the city of Savannah. The objective is justice and compliance with the code, right? What's the fastest path for us to get there, to bring justice for the people that we serve and bring them in compliance with the code so that we can improve the community that we love? I want to make sure that we do that as best as we can. If we can have a conversation with them about the pro temps and maybe it's being doled out or farmed out, let's take a look at those things and address those. But what we're doing, how is it going to best alleviate the problem? The challenges that we have, what can we do best today to alleviate the actual problem? And I see it would be an enormous undertaking to develop our own municipal court. And I just want to make sure that we exhaust every opportunity before we have to go to those measures. And I believe me, I have lived this personally. My constituents have lived through hell through court cases in Recorder's Court that have languished for years. I know it. They scream at me because they can't scream at the judges, right? Or, you know, and the seats don't change over very often. So maybe they feel like their voice isn't heard. I don't know. So it's, I've got some personal stake in it. And I have constituents that absolutely roasted me over stuff that has not, I have no control. They've asked me to do, they've asked us to do extrajudicial things because they're so fed up because they want to see an improvement in their community. So that's where, I mean, that's my background. I know it. But I'm still not willing to give up the ghost. And I want to make sure that we exhaust every opportunity and prove what we have. I know that they're here and they're listening, you know? Justice does need to be served. It does need to be swift. And everybody has a right to due process. Some of the cases languish for years. Let's try to address those concerns. I don't know if it's, I don't know what the structure looks like. If we need to have a skating rink lock-in and a pow-wow and talk to them about it. But I've got the email evidence to show you. I've got the angry constituents that don't understand the system. They just want to make sure that the neighbors next door aren't dumping stuff in the lawn. They want to make sure that they, that everybody's gonna maintain their property just like they do. And they put their blood and their sweat and their tears to maintaining their properties, which are getting more expensive by the moment, and cutting the grass in the 110-degree heat. And there's always that guy or gal that just ain't gonna do it. And it infuriates me too. Let's find a way to address those, but let's try to, let's just try to fix the problems we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me go to Alder Woman Bell since she had not said anything yet, then I'll come back to you.
Don't come back to me. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll wrap these two and then we'll wrap them up.
I just had her hand up for a while.
And I'll be brief. I do have two or three questions, but I haven't heard enough today to convince me that it's time to change. I'm looking at the comparison of Recorder's Court and Municipal Court on the chart that was presented. And, I mean, it's just, I don't see enough differences. And even in listening to the quasi-arguments for a municipal court, I just haven't heard enough. Let me ask you a question, city manager. And, well, maybe I should start with Joe. Joe, you said that out of the last five years, you said the costs increased significantly in the last year, right?
So in the last five years for fines collected versus the subsidy for the general fund, and I'm glad you asked this, Donna's been tracking these numbers. There's been two years where there's been a deficit within the last five years. And they happen to be the last two. So 2023 and 2024 were the two years within the last five where there was a deficit from the city of Savannah's general fund contribution and fines collected.
And what change? To what do you attribute?
A greater...
Those increase?
A greater propensity for community service.
Okay. So those were judicial decisions? So, interesting. So the mayor spoke about the, oh, the voting process. Although in the system that we have now, the judges are elected by the electorate. But you said it's countywide. Can that be changed to just the municipality? Well, you said it's the city of Savannah and unincorporated Chatham. Can those constituents be the ones, can we identify those constituents to vote for the elected judges?
I think it requires some legislative work, but ultimately, again, this is to put it all out there, so to speak. So they're taking feedback. So that's one of the things that they could investigate. I believe it requires a legislative change.
And you could even think about it like this, Alder Woman, is essentially, we are contracting for the services of elected judges, right? We have, we supply staff, the county supplies courtroom. And we have three elected judges qualified and chosen by the people to make these judicial decisions. And that's who we're paying to adjudicate our local, you know, our local issues, whether that's code compliance, you know, traffic violations, parking violations, et cetera. So if we were to, you know, seek out a change to, you know, I think right now, the city of Savannah, you know, pays the cost of two of the three Recorder's Court judges. And I think the county pays for the third. You know, so to say we were to seek legislative or state legislative change, it would say two of the Recorder's Court judges would be elected citywide and the other would be elected countywide. That might interfere with some of the other duties that the Recorder's Court does, right? They are the trial of first impression, right, for a lot of crimes that are ultimately gonna go to Superior Court. So that would be something that we'd have to think about. But again, one of those, again, central issues where I think people, you know, that, one of the issues I've heard from council members, one of the issues that we hear, that perhaps, you know, there's not the right representation. But they're, you know, they're still qualified judges and sent there to court, you know, from the people.
When pro temp judges are called in to adjudicate because a sitting judge and elected judges all, I mean, who monitors that time off? Can a sitting judge take off as much as he or she wants?
A sitting judge can take off as much as he or she wants, yes. They're accountable to the voters.
Accountable to the voters. So that's an extra expense on the city, I assume?
Yes.
When we're paying pro temps?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not ready to dump it either. My colleague, well, colleagues, I guess, have voiced their issues. But I would like to, I'm just not convinced that it's time to throw in the towel and try something different. I would rather feel assured that we had done, taken the necessary steps to change or improve that, the structure that we have. And I don't see enough differences when I compare the structure of the two or even the functions of the two Recorder's Court versus a municipal court to make me feel that, oh, if we switch to a municipal court, it seems to me that expenses are gonna go up significantly. And I won't even cite the reasons that have already been given. So the argument for me today is not convincing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair House. And there was something I saw regarding that the expenses actually ultimately would not require the staffing configuration that we have now. I believe that's included in this document?
Yes, sir. We've done a preliminary assessment of what it'd take to stand up municipal court. Now, keep in mind, a lot of decisions would have to be made for that budget to be more concrete. We'd have to determine exactly what cases we'd be hearing. We'd have to determine exactly the amount of space needs that we've had. So there's a lot of unanswered questions in order for that number to be accurate. However, we would not need the, obviously, the staff number that we have right now in our Recorder's Court. A municipal court of Savannah would not need as many judges because the case volume would go down. But those budget estimates are rough at this time. It would require more further review.
Thank you. Alder Woman Miller Blakely, Alder Woman Lanier, Alder Woman Shabazz, Alder Woman Wilder Bryan, and then we need to break.
One last comment.
Then we need to break.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one last comment.
All right, well, we'll see where we are, depends on how long they take.
This is important now. This is making millions of dollars.
Well, we're not making decisions, we're not making decisions, sir.
I know, Mr. Mayor. We can break.
Please let her go ahead and make her point.
Thank you. How many staff members does that court have outside of the judges?
Outside of the judges is 30, 30 staff members.
30 staff members?
Yes, ma'am.
How many do we pay for?
The, we pay for all those staff members.
We pay for all the staff members?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You said something about community service that the, I think it was you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Melder. You said that instead of the judges giving fines, they're giving more community service? That bothers me because it makes me think that instead of us doing something to benefit the community by giving community service, you're wanting the judges to enforce fines on people? Is that what you're saying?
No, I would not attribute that motive to my comments. It's simply saying that judges are making the judicial decision that more often, that instead of a fine or a fee, that they would be, the consequence would be community service. And I think, honestly, the truth, I think there's a lot to unravel and unpack and discuss with that. And I think it's a conversation that we really, really need to have with our judges as well to kind of understand what constitutes community service. That's their decision to make. But it can sometimes be, you know, quite loose what community service means. And so when you, and understanding how important the financial question is about whether or not we stay with the Recorder's Court or make a change, there is a cost to that. There's a cost to changing judicial philosophy as well. Not that it's a cost that we shouldn't bear or that we, you know, to say that fines are better than community service.
Let me finish, please.
It's just, it's just a policy question that you and this council are going to have to contend with because the less fines we collect at Recorder's Court, the more general fund dollars have to go to pay for the administration of the court.
Point.
Yes.
So you're saying that when you talk about self-sustaining, you're talking about fining individuals to help sustain that court, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I have an issue with that. And I thank you judges that's still here for having the heart to say, we're going to give community service as opposed to fining our constituents. Let me tell you this. I've been in that court several times. And what I see in that court is a lot of African-Americans. I don't see a whole lot of Caucasians in that court. And that bothers me because when you look at the people in that court, especially in code enforcement, especially in areas where they're marginalized. And they're up there because they got rust on their fences, because the grass is so high. But then when you go into other communities, they're doing what you call, what is that? Wilding, okay? Maybe we need to find another way to fund the court and not on the backs of poor and marginalized people. I would like to see a mixture of everybody, all races, ethnicities, up in those courts. Because when I've been there, and I've been there a whole lot of times, I don't see a whole lot of folk that don't look like me, okay? Now, I heard someone say that there were a lot of complaints about the processes of the court. I've not been privy to those. I've not been privy to those complaints. I would like to know, how can I get copies of those complaints?
Sure, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And to address your question, we do, when, when, when and if the court does not, you know,
Excuse me?
Collect the fines enough to sustain itself.
I heard somebody make a comment.
We do, we do backfill the court administration. Like I said, it's a necessary function of government. And whether or not the court collects fines enough to sustain its own operation or not, the City of Savannah is going to make up any difference there because it's, it's necessary for the court. And of course, we'd like to see no code compliance issues. We'd like to see no one speeding. We'd like to see no one violating traffic laws, so we'd like to see an empty court. So obviously, that's what we would love to work towards, that ideal, as fictional as it may be. But, you know, again, to your point, we will always pay for that necessary function of government whether or not the fines collected there sustain it or not.
Thank you. Alderwoman Lanier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Joe, for your presentation. So, we're having this discussion, and I haven't heard all of the complaints. I believe personally that it takes cases too long to go through all the courts. I got a couple myself, been over a year. Should be simple, just some property issues, however. So, so we know that there are issues in the courts that all of us would like to see better. So we're having this conversation because we feel like this system or the Recorder's Court is broken. And so my question is, to what extent is it broken beyond repair? And, and from hearing everything I hear now, I think we're taking a very, as far as offering alternatives, solutions, I think we're taking a very heavy-handed approach, almost like using a sledgehammer to kill a net. Now, when we bring up everybody's doing it, that would never work with my parents. So if everybody gonna jump off the cliff, you're gonna jump off the cliff too. So that's not a good argument. We need to look at these processes and management. It sounds like to me, we have, we have a relatively new staff, judges, and maybe management over there at the court. I don't know if they've had enough time to look at those issues that you all have been hearing and had an opportunity to, to offer management adjustments and system processes changes to be able to deal with these issues that have been plaguing the court for so long. And, and another one of my concerns is how justice is administered. So Joe, and Jay, help me with this. On page six, you're saying that under municipal court, you will have appointed or elected judges. Now, I'm not feeling appointed judges at all. From my five years of serving on this council, and what I have seen as far as something bordering corruption and all of this systemic, consistent issues, I would not want anybody to make a judgment call on who the judge should be. Let them have a vote. I feel like it would be more equitable in our justice system if we allow people to elect their judges. So my question is, what is the instance, Joe, when you said appointed or elected? What determines whether that judge would be appointed or elected?
City Council would make that determination.
So that's not good.
And Alderwoman, to your point about, does the, the, does the court run well? I think, you know, the attorney and I have said it before, we think the court runs well. The court runs well. It's a, it's a well-run court. And we're bringing this discussion because of the visioning session, because of issues that we hear from you and constituents about code compliance cases moving too slowly, about traffic dockets being continued, and, and other issues of the court where I think there's, there's levels of improvement that need to be made and discussed about both the administrative runnings of the court.
Thank you for clarifying that because that all sounds like issues that could be resolved with some tweaks and management. The last thing, on page seven, you said that there was, on the bottom of pros, financial autonomy and potential cost savings. So are we seeing duplications now or, or where are we going to save?
Well, the, the cost savings, if you, if we were to have a municipal court, would be seen likely in the long run just over the, the, we would not need to carry the same amount of staff, including judges and pro temp judges and court administrators and court personnel to be able to adjudicate a municipal court that only dealt with the City of Savannah municipal issues. And that means that those costs would have to be absorbed, as the attorney said, and magistrate court or Superior Court or other places where those kind of non-municipal issues that are currently heard in Recorder's Court would have to be heard somewhere else if they weren't going to be heard in the municipal court. So that would be a, a long-time project, a long-term projection of some cost savings, though there would be a cost to transitioning away from the current court and making those, and making that switch now. There would be a cost to that.
Thank you.
To quote the, the Matrix, just because something works doesn't mean it can't be improved. Alderwoman Shabazz, Alderwoman Wilderbryan, Alderman Purtee, and we probably just go right into city council meetings. I'm just letting y'all know that. Well, I mean, that's up to y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I'm sitting and listening to my colleagues express their concerns, and thank you, Chief Sheerhouse, for the presentation. Now, I've been on this city council, and to me and the mayor, this is not a new subject matter. But I do believe we are, we are an aggressive council, and we are getting old matters taken care of. And I consider this an old matter, and we need to get it taken care of. So therefore, I am asking, and I'm not, I don't have long comments. You all have said all of this very well on today. My comments are that we keep this in front of us. We don't lose sight of it. Let's make the improvements and let's get it done. Be it keeping the Recorder's Court as it is and, and I have not always, I have not been a person who say to get rid of something and if we just need to improve some things. So what we need to do is to, and I'm hearing the weight of the council, is to improve, get, get it done. Let's get the improvements done. I'm looking at staff persons from Recorder's Court and the judges sitting out here, and I'm pretty sure they're saying, we need some help. We need, we need to get some things fixed. If anybody knows what to get fixed, the ones who are doing the work. So this is not a difficult ask. You know, record enforcement violations over and over and over and over again, years and years and, that stuff has to stop. Arrangements and preliminary hearings of misdemeanors and felonies. I'm hearing stacks and stacks and stacks, and all this stuff is stacking up and they can't, don't have enough people. This is the same conversation over and over again. I'm asking everybody, let's get this job, let's get this done. Let's fix what's wrong and let's move forward in a better way. So that, that, that is, those are my comments to, to do this. And let's stop talking about this and make things better for our citizens. Our citizens are the ones who get the short end of the stick as we continue to prolong this conversation. So let's, let's get it done. We're doing great with this council. Let's get this particular area solved. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Wilderbryan.
Mr. Mayor, just three things. I want to make sure, and I was not going to say this, but I'll put this in the air. Ms. Willingham, because she is a, a professional person, but we do know that there are some blurred lines and the judges, I respect authority, but they kind of cross over into the administration part of what's going on. And that's one of the problems. And if we can get y'all to authority, to respect authority, I believe we can move faster through this process. The other thing I want you to clarify, please, Mr. Bates and City Manager. I'm being told that Odell was the last county person, and so we're currently, are now paying for those three and not two, Recorder's Court.
That's correct.
Okay, the other thing that I want to ask, Joe, good presentation from out here, Ms. Willingham. I don't know if you have one or not, but the problem I'm having now is, have you did some research about the age of the cases that are going through Recorder's Court? And then what is the continuous rate? I'd like to get that answered. Don't have to get it to date, but that's something that we all should know. And I believe that that would kind of see where we all are because it's always going to be about the citizens for me. Thank you so much.
Alderman Purtee, thank you briefly.
Thanks. I'll make this quick, Mr. Mayor. I know everybody wants a break. So we, we talk about equity, right, in the City of Savannah. But we need to think in terms beyond what we do and more into what the court does. And what I'm hearing is some things I've advocated for, which I have yet to see, but I would love to see. We do have some amazing diversion programs. We do have some amazing diversion programs in the court. They work. And I would hate to lose that, right? There's some things I've advocated for. Alderman Plumb and I have talked about night court, and we laugh about it every time we talk about it. Saturday court, right? Yeah, Saturday court, traffic court, stuff like, stuff that's going to make it easier on our citizens to, to come and attend and be able to be held accountable for whatever action that they've done, all right? So we talk about equity, but we really have to mean what we talk about and we really have to practice it. This is an evolving process, all right? We can't just look at something and go, oh, my gosh, financially, it's not working right now. Boom, let's, let's figure out how we're going to build a new building. Whatever that's going to look like for a city courthouse, okay? That's an expense, huge. It's not just, you got to have a bench and a place for people to go. There's holding cells. There's processes that take place. So the startup cost is a little bit concerning. My, my big, probably my big ask is that we have the conversations. If we're identifying those issues, I think the courageous conversations need to take place. Because all too often, what we do in Chatham County, because we're a proud Chatham County, we're a proud Savannah, we like to build our silo and we stay inside of it, and we don't invite anybody else in, right? And in the long run, that hurts our citizens. So when we're talking about the cost savings, have we looked at how that's going to impact the savings or what it's going to cost us with growths of our, our city? Have we incorporated that in? Because I know a lot of times when we have these various projects, we're looking at inflated numbers, right? Okay, we expect there to be this much of a population by this time, and this is what we're going to need. So we can't just think in terms of this point in time. Now we have to really project some things out. The other thing I'll say, and I was not going to say this, and I think what we need to do is, I'll say it anyway, and I'm going to end. We have some great city staff. We have some great folks that work at Recorder's Court. But I think right now, we need to let the folks at Recorder's Court do their job and let the judges do their thing and have those conversations. And we need to let city staff go back to working on the things that matter to our constituents, such as fixing roads, picking up trash on the side of the road, right? Because I can't, I can't trust a city government to have this conversation when it takes two weeks to pick up trash on the side of the road or 16 weeks to fill a pothole. Or two or three years. So I'm not saying that to disparage any city, any city staff. I'm just saying, the process, the bureaucracy has become so bogged down, I don't see this as a good idea. That's just my opinion. I appreciate you. Mr. Sheerhouse, hell of a presentation. You did really good. Thank you so much.
Or five years for a code compliance case to go through a court system. So, so, so let's be, so let's be clear, and, and these are the final comments on this, two things. The first thing is, is that this arrived here because during our visioning session, there were multiple comments from multiple Aldermen regarding issues of code, various issues of violations that we were screaming at staff about, which were actually issues of the court. And the reality was, and that's when it came up, to investigate how we could move forward in this. Ultimately, for us, this is about equity. It's about access. It's about accountability. This has to work for us. This has to work for us. This has to work for our citizens. This has to work for our taxpayers. And the reality is that when the City Manager brings a budget that has to discuss, talking about being able to subsidize a court that should sustain itself, when you all are giving lists to the City Manager, we want this, we want this, we want this, where do you think the money comes from? And so as someone who's not necessarily court-involved today, I don't want to have to pay for a court that I'm not involved in today. And so those are the types of considerations. So I think, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Sheerhouse, Ms. Willingham, thank you for continuing to bring to us the issues that we have discussed during our visioning session. You have stuck to those things. We have to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time. And so, so for us, you, this is not, as I said at the beginning, county staff is reporting back to us, as I think I said a couple of weeks ago, of where they are. They will take this feedback and then they'll come back to us. And so I think they've heard some feedback. I think there's some questions that need to be answered. But the reality is, this, this has to work. It has to work for us, and it has to work well. And I think we, we should be in a position to demand it does so. And if the current situation does not work, does not work in multiple, at maximum efficiency, then we might need to look at something else, and I'm just where I am on that. But anyway, so, well, I mean, again, that, well, again, that is, but no, that is where we are in this conversation. And so the voices, the people who heard it, heard it. And again, you know, I'm gonna go hard for the folk. And so wherever that ends up, that's where, if it works for us, it works for us. If it don't work for us, we're going to make it work for us. We are standing adjourned until 2:00 PM. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Sheerhouse. Thank you, Ms. Willingham.
Thank you, judges.